All right, we have 6 o'clock here. I say we call this meeting to order. We'll start with the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for participating out there. All right, roll call.
Mr. Worrell?
Present.
Mr. Sora?
Here.
Ms. McGinnley?
Ms. McGinnley?
Yes, I can't hear her. But I'm here.
Mr. Riggs?
Mr. Riggs?
Here.
Mr. Martis?
Here.
Mr. Martis?
Here.
Okay.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Has everybody had a chance to read the minutes?
Yes, I'll make the motion, we accept the minute.
Second. All right, Debbie made the motion, Steve seconded, all in favor?
Do I have to do a roll call vote?
Yes, yes, actually. Everyone, I'm sorry, because we're remoting in, every one of these has to be a roll call vote.
Okay.
So for the minutes, we'll start with Mr. Sora. Okay, Ms. McGinnley?
Aye.
Mr. Worrell?
Aye.
Mr. Riggs?
I do concur, I vote aye on the minutes. I just have one topic, and we can table it for later if you'd like. It was just following up on the Green Street engineering fees that we had voted on in the minutes.
Okay. Okay, so...
Let's, we'll table that then, if you're okay with that, Nathan, we'll table that till later.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. And Jeff, Mr. Martis?
Aye.
Approved, yes?
Yes.
All right.
Next is the claims.
I'll make a motion, we accept the claim.
Okay.
Second.
Right, so then, did I do roll call for the ones who make it and second it? Or just the other two?
I think just...
The other three, I mean?
Yeah, the other three.
Okay, so Debbie made the motion, and Steve seconded. How about Dan, do you approve?
Aye.
The claims?
Aye.
Nathan? Approving the claims.
Aye.
And Jeff?
Aye.
Great. Okay.
All right. Let's see.
And then financials.
Last of all, we have the financials. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion, we accept the financials as written.
I'll second it.
Okay. So, Dan?
Aye.
Nathan?
Aye.
And Jeff?
Aye.
Great. Thanks.
All right, thank you. So we have a public hearing, do we need to...
Well, you've got to open the bid for the bottles. Hi, Bob. Open the bid for the bottles.
Okay.
And it's not really a public hearing, we just spell under that auction.
Okay.
It's a sealed bid.
We have two sealed bids. Each one has one bid. The first one is for the Miller bottles, and we have Preston Miller.
Yeah. You might have a note of it. And that's by all of them.
Preston has bid $90. That's nine zero dollars. For the remaining bottles. Okay. Do we...
Do you accept it?
Mr. Chair, you have the ability to either accept that one bid that you had, or you are allowed to reject all bids, so it's up to the council for whatever your approval is.
Is that the only bid?
That's the only bid.
Yeah, for a couple months, we...
Yeah, it's been, we know it's been six solid months of pushing.
It's my understanding there's a lot of unmarked bottles left. The majority of them.
Does anybody have an idea how many's left?
No.
That was my question.
I was down there, and there's quite a, there's a wall of them. Anybody else? There could be...
400?
That's the exact number I was going to use. There could be 400 bottles, plus or minus 200, or plus 200.
And crates, and yeah, whatever.
And does that include the crates as well?
Let me ask this, does anyone reject, want to reject this offer? Mr. Chair, the only thing else that you could consider is, I think you've talked about having an auction of all unused property sometime in the spring, which now may be later in the summer because of the conditions. The only other choice would be to put that, those in with any other auction of all town property that you want to sell. It's just another choice.
I would like to reject that offer.
Is that a motion, or?
Well, I guess I can't, well, I, I want, I guess discussion, but I mean, it seems like, I mean, I'm not expecting a million dollars, but like Bob has said, that we could auction some other things off at the same time.
I tend to agree with you, Jeff.
I would too, actually.
Okay, well, then, hearing that many, can I get a motion to reject this offer?
I'll make that motion.
Second. Thank you, all three of you. Okay, roll call vote?
Yeah. Okay, so that was Jeff, and then Steve. So Debbie, did you, you voted to reject? What was your vote?
Yes, I did.
And Dan?
Reject, aye.
And Nathan?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
So, I will let him know it's rejected.
All right. The next sealed bid would be for the farmland, and we have one bid from R.L. Myers Family Farms LLC. Mr. Chair, if I may, not correct, and I know it says bid on the agenda, this was actually a request for proposal, and there is a distinction between those two, and so this is a response to our offer to have people submit proposals depending on what they want to do. We kind of put the parameters of what we wanted as far as the timing of the lease, but because of the way it was advertised and such, it was a request for proposals, and so this is a response. Okay, well, then I have a request for proposal, one request for proposal. Their request for proposal, their bid, is $150 per acre on a one-year contract for a total installment of $2,400. $2,400.
And that was just to go to December 1st, is that right? Is that what?
That is to run through, yes, run through November 30th, 2020. And of course, it's a late start, it just starts as soon as you would accept any proposal this month, and run through November 30th, and it contains approximately 16 acres. So what was their calculation of 100? 150 an acre for 1,600 now.
Did that knock out the part that we were going to set aside?
Yes, it was, it does. Well, not the new set aside, but the corrective amount that we did midway through this last year's lease, when it was determined they really didn't have 18 acres, they only had 16, so we adjusted their rent accordingly.
Right, but I'm talking about, you know, we're planning on separating a little bit of that for the...
More of that, but that has not been taken out, and Doug was, before he left, was not yet ready to do that, which is one of the reasons we did just a one-year lease. So this would be the same acreage that has been farmed during the past three years. Now, Bob, I want to say that this says, please consider our said bid of $150 per acre for a one-year contract. Should we say a one-season contract? Yeah, one season, one farm year. One farm year, not calendar year. Because we'll still be, we won't be correcting the situation. They'll be wanting to plant and not have a contract. That is correct. And we made that clear in our request for proposals, and in the publication that went out, all was to indicate that it did, was just to go through November 30th, 2020. Did they identify how they were going to make a payment one time, not twice a year? They did not say, the only thing that's attached is a letter from, of credit from Wayne Bank. Okay. And, no, I'll give this to you to review, but very short.
Just beyond, beyond the dates and times and payment, aside curiosity, is that the going rate? It's been a while, while since I've been banking, I haven't recalled.
Yeah, Jeff, that's acceptable.
Okay.
And how many acres is out there?
16 acres, approximately 16. That's what they're, the 150 an acre, $2,400. It's very close to 16. Yeah, that's exactly. You take 16 times 15, that's... Yeah, but it may not be, could be 15.9... Oh, yeah, it was 16 plus or minus, but they are okay for the 16. Okay. And did you say this is from the R.L. Myers Family Farms? That's correct. Do we have anyone that wants to contest this bid? Proposal, proposal, excuse me. I'll get it right back in.
Would you say that again, please?
Is there anyone that wants to contest this proposal?
I don't.
Should, can I get a motion then?
I would make a motion, we accept the proposal, Dan.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a first and a second.
All right. Debbie, do you approve?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Nathan?
Aye.
Great, thanks.
All right, thank you, everyone. Next is guests. No one out there? Okay, we're good on that one, guys. Unfinished business. Number one, large trash pickup, May 4th.
Yeah, just wanted to do a reminder, that's when Rumkey's going to allow anyone to do their large trash pickup on May 4th. Furniture, it has to be wrapped, no tires, no air conditioning, that we've done before.
Paint.
No paint.
Okay, newspaper, Melanie?
Yes?
Melly, sorry, we're still on for May 4th?
Okay, great.
Everything's going well?
I wasn't sure if all that stuff would eventually change if COVID, or if that would still be carrying on, so I'll let people know.
Well, if Rumkey is still doing trash, and they're willing to pick it up, it's to be placed at the curb, and there'll be no interaction. I'm sure they'll be wearing the proper PPE.
Okay, sounds good.
All right, Foot Street Project.
This is Nathan.
Nathan?
Sorry, it took me a minute to unmute my line. Did everybody get a chance to look at the proposal for Milestone that I sent out earlier this morning?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. So after, after some back and forth with Milestone, the intent with that proposal is to basically accept the Foot Street condition as good enough, and rather than, our first request to them was to mill and repave the entire job, and they had counter-proposed that there were other areas in the town that maybe could use those resources, and so the intent there was to minimize the town's cost risk by taking what remediation would have been placed on Foot Street, but rather accept that is good enough, or most of the job is good enough, and apply those quantities and those costs to other areas. And so, North Cambridge Road was one of the areas that the street department identified, or North Lincoln Drive, whichever you want to, it breaks off right there in front of the cemetery. And then also, right there in front of the fire department was an area that I had identified as needing some, needing some repairs.
I want to tell them...
Nathan, just real quickly, is, so, well, obviously, we're taking a little less repair on Foot Street, but are any of those repairs, I guess, not being done, I mean, do they still meet the criteria called for by the, you know, state or handicap, or what have you?
Yeah, so, we're not held to the same criteria as, say, like a federal highway reimbursement project.
Right.
But we should still be, we were designed, and we should still be constructed to compliance. The areas that my, that I was most concerned about is the area right there by the bridge that was previously a sinkhole, and then after the paving, it's still holding water. That's an area that's going to be milled and resurfaced, along with part of that intersection where there's a pretty ugly asphalt joint, I would say, it's on the east side of Front and Foot. That'll, that'll be taken back. So there won't be two joints, there'll be one, basically, on the east side of the intersection. And then they'll basically do a big, call it a patch, but they're going to mill and resurface from that intersection up to the north side of the bridge where they were not able to get the paver, it's where the sidewalk kind of comes off the bridge and then angles, they weren't able to get the paver in there, and so they did a lot of hand work, and it's just really porous, and I had asked if they take the mill and resurface up to there. Other than that, it's basically the area around the entrance to the park where there was a lot of, a lot of porous surface, and I'm not sure what exactly happened there, but it looks like there's some compaction issues, and I asked that they place a, an asphalt emulsion, it's basically a surface seal on top of that to try to seal up those pores. And I think that the two of those things address the quality condition issues that I was concerned about, and I think will protect us against, you know, water being able to permeate down into the asphalt. And in addition, part of the proposal that Milestone is offering is a three-year warranty on the, on the project. So if there is anything outstanding that's not addressed by these repairs, as long as it surfaces over the next three years, they, they're covering that work.
What is the normal warranty on that? Is it more than three years, or is it less?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
I said, what is the normal warranty on their work like that? Is it less than three years, more than three years, or?
I'd have to go back and look at the contract, but I would say it's probably a year.
Okay.
When I talked to others in the paving industry, and told them the three-year, they felt that was acceptable. I think this is a good opportunity for us. As we did the risk assessment with the guys, their number-one priority in paving was Lincoln Drive. Number two, you know, we're not talking Green Street, but if you looked at the diagram, it's in front of the fire station. I think we were able to not only get an acceptable end to this project, but we're able to knock out two of the biggest issues in the community at the same time, for no additional cost. So Nathan, I applaud you in your efforts on this, and thank you for all the time you put in it.
Yeah, no problem, I'm just trying to, trying to do what's best for the town, and again, my bottom line was minimizing the town's liability on the Foot Street project, because I did have some quality concerns, I think we all did. But in the idea of, you know, the town has cost risks in other places, North Cambridge Road, if you've seen it lately, or any time in the near future, it has more serious quality and cost to the town than, than I think some of the issues. In my opinion, I think we accept some of the things with Foot Street that maybe aren't 100%, but at the same time, we're going to have a greater improvement to the area outside the cemetery, the area outside of the fire department. I think the trade-off is a better win for the town.
Okay.
Do you have any comments?
Well, you've done, I think, I think there's nobody else on that, Nathan, I would, I would agree with that.
Are we comfortable with taking a motion to accept the bid, or accept the proposal?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Second.
I'll second it.
All right. We'll let Sheri.
Okay, so Jeff made the motion, and Steve seconded. Debbie? Yes? You approve?
Yes, I, I think I seconded it, did I?
Okay. You approved?
I can't hear what you're saying.
Yes.
And of course, Nathan, you approve, correct?
Yes, I do. My only concern is, I can respond to Milestone, but they may require a formal response on town letterhead with signature.
Okay.
I can follow up on that.
Yeah, just let me know if that's what they need.
Thank you, Nathan.
All right, our next issue, the abandoned houses on Vine Street and feral cats being fed by one resident.
Well, I had the phone call today about, there's four abandoned houses on, up around the Fifth and Vine area, and so the, the, I think Doug was working on these before. Do you remember any of those areas, Bob, Fifth and Vine, for abandoned houses?
All the time I had, no, I don't.
Okay. Then there's one homeowner who is feeding, they're trapping, the neighbors are trapping the cats, and then the homeowner's going to the, don't, not the pound, and the shelters, and bringing more cats back in, and then feeding all of them, and so they know there's a big issue, there's a problem with raccoons, snakes, skunks, and now cats up in that area. So I told him I would bring it on the agenda towards, for you guys to discuss, because he wasn't going to be able to come to the meeting tonight, and he even asked if he bought the properties, the abandoned properties, if the town would help him tear them down, haul the materials away, because he said he could buy the property if it's for sale, but yet then it's another expense to tear it down and to get rid of all the materials. And I think he said Doug had told him that to begin with, and I remember Doug mentioning that sometimes in our meetings, but I didn't feel like that was my place to tell him, that yes, we could do that.
Sheri, I don't even assume that Bob made help, have we, and I remember Doug talking about this, have we, have we even done any kind of title work on his property?
On the abandoned properties?
Yes.
That I can't answer.
I mean, if this was one of the ones that was in the BLIT program early on, we did, we've not updated that for maybe now two years, and if you recall, some of them came up with delinquent taxes, and pack sale judgment, mortgage against some, which caused us to have the problems, and why we didn't pursue some of those others.
I don't believe that any of those three were on that.
Okay, then we've not done any title work on these.
One of the properties that you're talking about, I believe, may possibly be in the county. Is it the one on Sixth Street, right across from their residence?
Yes, now that one, I know is tied to the one that was on our BLIT.
Right, but that one, I can, because that's mine.
And that is one of them.
Yeah, and it actually sold at the sheriff's sale, and the owner has, it's actually a tax sale, and the owner has a year before he can do anything with the property, so he can't really touch it, although it's been sold, they have a year to come back and reclaim the property, which they're not going to do, but, so the new owner can't really do anything with the property until the year's up, and I can't remember when that is, I think it's like in June or July of this year. So I can speak to that one, but I can't speak about the ones in town. But I do know which one on Sixth Street you're talking about, yeah.
Yeah, it's right before the curve, or...
Right, right.
Like the one before the curve.
Yeah, that's it, yeah.
The other property, I think, has been abandoned for probably at least 15 years. No one's lived there, it's been a long time.
Yeah, and then one of the houses, I think, is for sale, it's been for sale for a bit, but...
Correct, that's on, yes, that's on the west side of the street.
Right, yeah.
I don't know if he's got a quick fix for him, but I'm not sure.
I think we've got two issues here. Number one, the feral cats, and we're back to the same issue we had four months ago.
It's just not, in those two locations, they're everywhere, you know, there's feral cats everywhere.
I know that, I don't know about right now, but last time, and as in most places, they're not accepting animals, the shelters are filled.
Yeah, that's my understanding too, also, they're, they're trying to donate, or get people to adopt, they're trying out because shelters are so full, with everything else that's going on, or I believe you're having a hard time keeping up with it, but as my knowledge, they are not accepting any pet, any cat or dog.
So can you get the names of the, do you know who the owners are off the top of your head?
Just one?
I mean, maybe Bob, give that to Bob, and he can research it, and then come at our next meeting and find out.
Yeah, I can get that.
So I guess we'll have to table this until the next meeting, and Bob will look into it, and we can try to contact...
I think that's all you can do right now.
Richard, have we talked to the person that's feeding the cats? Richard, have we talked to the person that's feeding the cats and purchasing or going to the shelters and bringing more cats into the neighborhood?
We have not, she just cut the complaint today, so.
Okay, is that something you're able to do?
Yeah, I will follow up on it.
All right, thank you. I say then we table this until Bob looks up the information on the properties and give Richard the opportunity to talk to this individual.
I would agree with that.
Okay. All right, moving on to new business. We have the approval to accept $100 donation to the fire department and the police department.
Right, we had Steve Mill donated $100 to the police department and $100 to the fire department. And I just need approval to accept those donations.
Who donated it?
Steve Mill.
Oh, Steve Mill. I'll make a motion to accept the $100 donations from Steve Mill.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, so.
Okay, we have first and second.
So Dan, do you approve? And Nathan, do you approve the donation? And Jeff?
Aye.
Great, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Hey, Dan.
Yes.
Is the fire chief there?
Yes.
We did also get a donation today of some gloves for the police department and the fire department. And it's an anonymous donor, but I just wanted to make him aware of that. I'll get those to him as soon as I can.
It's great.
That's nice.
All right, let's move on to the staff report. Jeff, you want to come up here?
Okay, really nothing to report. We've had no problems. Right now, we have enough PPE. We've got masks on all responding trucks, response trucks. We've got gloves, we've got hand sanitizer. Hopefully, we won't need any more stuff. Right now, that's all been demanded. Kind of concerned at some point they may come up and want to have gowns. If that happens, then we're going to have an issue with finding those. Because as far as I know, nobody has those.
I'm sorry, Dan, is this, is Jeff talking right now?
Yes.
Okay, okay, we're speaking. Jeff, is this what we discussed last week?
We were talking about, yeah, like I said, right now, if nothing changes, we're okay.
Okay.
Our calls now with the H911, we're getting information before we go. If there's any symptoms, if the patients have any symptoms at all, that helps us know kind of what we got to gear up for. So we're kind of watching what we're doing.
You told me we had the N95 mask and then we were in, we would definitely have a spacing. And is that correct?
That's right. Yeah, we're having abbreviated meetings, we're getting in and checking the trucks, doing what has to be done and getting the guys out, not congregating.
I'm just, I couldn't hear you, I'm just making sure.
Yeah, we're doing best we can.
All right.
Okay, thank you. Richard?
Thank you, Jeff.
Yeah, along those same lines. We, I think we're doing pretty good on PPE right now. And also Jeff, the fire chief, we have some more N95 mask orders and I'll replace the ones that he gave to us a couple of weeks ago. So that should help them out a little bit too. But I think we're in pretty good shape right at the moment as far as that goes.
Both departments, can I ask that, have you both placed orders for all your PPE as of now?
Yes, I'm expecting.
Okay, Richard's got it for both departments? Okay, great.
We're going to duplicate, we're trying to.
Okay, great.
We're going to share the costs.
Great, thank you.
I had to note to you guys there, about a week ago, the first quarter call totals. I don't know if you have any questions on any of that. And for Millie, I'll send that to her tomorrow.
As I recall, they were similar as normal.
Yeah, it's similar. Actually, our call volume is probably down about 20% than it was this time last year. I think a lot of it is due to the, you know, the current situation.
Okay.
Richard, thank you and thank the guys. I know it's got to be scary out there sometimes.
Thank you.
And I appreciate everything you guys are doing.
Thank you. Any other questions on that? To move on a little bit, we will probably be posting our job opening this week. I know we talked about it a couple of months back. I believe it's now time to move forward with that. So probably by the end of this week, we'll start seeing on our Facebook page a job posting and we'll move forward from there. But I don't have a confirmation letter yet that the employees leave, but most likely it's going to happen probably within the next two to four weeks.
Hey, Richard, quick question. I just, and I drive by, I know the school's closed now. But just, I see the police, the cars at the schools, is that just part of the contract that?
Yeah. Correct, we're just trying to keep them going as long as the contracts or the grant cycle's still going. To my knowledge, it still is. The superintendent hasn't told me otherwise yet. So I'm having them go to the school. Sometimes they're only staying half a day, but we're still trying to, you know, up the contract, so. And they help with the food delivery and handling that thing, you know, stuff like that out too, so.
Sure, okay. I just noticed the cars were still there and I just kind of wondered. And I think it's part of the contract, so.
Yeah, I have more things to you. We're working on SOP for school resource officers. We don't have one currently. And so we're doing some, or they are doing some research on that for me. Hopefully, we'll be able to put something together soon for that, so. Thank you.
Richard, I assume the officer that's probably going to leave is the one we thought was leaving at the first of the year.
I didn't hear the last part of that, I'm sorry.
Go ahead and relate.
He's confirming, asking which officer you're expecting to leave.
It's the one we discussed. The one we discussed, okay, thank you.
With that, there may be some further discussion need to be made with that.
Correct, yeah, that's where I was going with that, yeah.
Yes, I'm not ready to, to get it yet, so I'll be back in touch.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thanks, Richard. Richard, do you have anything else?
No, I think that's all I have.
Okay. Let's start with out in the field. Debbie, do you have anything?
No, I'm fine.
Jeff?
No, I don't have anything, Dan.
Thank you.
Yeah, I wanted to follow up on the Green Street engineering fees. That was in last month's minutes. There was a form that needed to be signed and returned to the contract.
Are you asking if that was done or?
There were some emails that went back and forth and I sent that to Sherry and Dan. I might have copied all of you, I can't recall. But it was basically Dan needed to just sign it and it needed to be sent back to Choice One.
Okay, I tell you what, I will look for that again. We'll make sure that I get it signed this time, sorry.
No worries. And then part two of that was, we had had a meeting with Doug and Bob and Bob Warner before he left. We talked about setting up a meeting with the property owner. Obviously, that is getting postponed because meetings. I didn't know if Bob Beaver.
Yes, that is on my list, but because of the current circumstances, I kind of put it on a 30-day hold, Nathan.
Sure, no, that's what I thought. And I'm sure with the county situation with Bob Warner leaving, they're not moving forward on their end, I'm sure either. So we can revisit that in the future.
All right, thank you. Nathan, do you have other issues?
Well, just Center Street, when I was talking with Milestone, they've won a lot of contracts this year. And I'm sure we'll be hearing from them soon about scheduling a pre-construction meeting for the Center Street project. That they intend to address all of these, everything we talked about. They plan on doing that all around the same time period when they're in town to do Center Street. So hopefully, we can get a schedule soon.
Hey, Nathan, just because, just because of the, I guess, I guess the complaints, I think we need to definitely be assured that they're going to be done in a timely manner. I mean, I hate to put it on you to ask them, but I'm going to tell them. But you know how that went the last couple of means ago, so.
Yeah, and actually, I followed up with Choice One before we advertised the Center Street project and I requested to put in a time set into the contract. And I'd have to go back and look at the language. But it was something like, you know, once they had the storm sewer installed, I want to say it was 30 days to finish the project. So they wouldn't have such a wide window like they did on Foot Street where they did the storm sewer in May, maybe? And then they came back and finished everything. It was, what, September, October? Yeah, so we tried to close that window. I'd have to go back and look to see how tight we closed it, but I want to say it was some month. Thanks, sir.
Nathan, I hate to again rely on you on this, but help me, remind me, where do we stand with the payment that we've withheld? When should we release that?
Yeah, that's a good point. Part of Milestone's proposal is that they would move forward with the proposal, but payment of everything minus the resurfacing, which I'm not sure that we have a breakdown on that. I think that the best, if we're voting to move forward with that proposal, I think the second part of that would be to move forward with processing the invoice that they had submitted, I believe, back in December for the storm sewer work. But most of that was for the storm sewer work.
Okay, so we would be releasing 100% of the funds?
No, I don't think so. I think what their proposal said was.
Oh, I'm sorry, minus, yeah. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Right. So I think for the time being, I guess if I need to make a motion on this, I would move that we would pay the invoice that Milestone had submitted to the town. I think it was in December. Sherry, does that ring a bell?
Yes, it does, yeah. I've got it, because that's the one that, that's the one that when Ryan was here and he held it and gave it to me, so I still got that invoice.
Was that a motion, Nathan?
Sure, yeah.
I'll second that motion.
All right, can we have a vote?
So Nathan made the motion, Steve seconded, Debbie?
Excuse me, is this just a motion to pay?
To pay for the, yeah, the.
Because in a way, when you accepted their proposal, that proposal included that payment on it. So I'm not sure you have to go ahead and do this now. Because you proved that, that was part of Milestone's proposal, is that you pay that.
Okay, we just held not paying them in December, so now I can pay that invoice, so it doesn't.
That's why I read what the proposal was that you accepted from Milestone.
Oh, look, everyone, Bob has said he feels that when we approved the proposal, we approved the payment. So let's scratch that motion. Okay, Nathan, anything else?
No, just maybe one last point of clarification there. Then there should be at least one further invoice for Foot Street for the remaining asphalt work and then that should be the end of it.
So I guess Ryan would probably send that invoice. Will Ryan send that or is Milestone send that?
I'm not sure if Milestone sent the original invoice to Choice One or if they sent it to the town. But I'm sure they'll make sure that we get it one way or another.
Okay.
And I can clarify with Scott when I follow up with him.
All right.
Thank you. All right, Steve?
Nothing further.
Okay, I've got a couple of things. Number one, I received an email today that I shared with everyone on the Okra COVID-19 grant. There's been such application or letters sent, so many letters sent that they've shut down the offer now. So in that email, it talked about a few things, but what I got out of it was, you know, obviously, it's not set in stone yet, but we will be contacted by an Okra representative here in the near future. So take a look at that if you haven't already. If you have questions, go ahead, submit them to me. I'll forward it to the grant writer and see what we can come up with. But Debbie, thank you for your questions and we will keep moving forward on this.
Okay, no problem. And I'll have a list of the merchants.
Great.
Sometime soon.
I think the more we can do now, the better off we'll be.
Yes, definitely.
Okay.
So Dan, that just came out today, is that correct?
Yeah, I got that at probably 2:00 or 3:00.
Okay.
That was the update on the grant.
Gotcha.
And I think it said at 4:00 today, they would no longer accept letters requesting the grant. Next issue I have is, we still, last year, we purchased new wreaths for streetlights. We still have the old ones. Now, these things are taking up space. They are beat up, worn, discolored. They were, they drew so much energy that they were shorting out streetlights. I personally don't see any value to them. And I would like to get approval to have them disposed of.
Dan, excuse me, I thought we had voted, I'm probably way off, but I thought we had voted to do something with those already.
Yeah, I thought for some reason we were going to give them.
We were going to give them to a community, but nobody wanted them.
Did they advertise that then?
I don't know, well, Doug, I'm not sure if it was advertised. I know it was brought up.
Someone showed interest in them, but I don't think they would contact us about it.
What I was wondering is if you could take several of them and make some good ones, you know what I mean? I wonder if they can be auctioned off with like the bottles and stuff. I don't know if, they might not be worth it.
Have you seen?
Yeah, I've seen them. They're pretty, when you look at them compared to a new one, they're pretty discolored and rough. Debbie, I'm not sure that if you take the parts of several of them and put them together, you'll still have a rough-looking ornament.
Yeah.
Jeff, do you have any comments on it?
I've got about one.
No, no, I mean, I'm getting old and I was in the hospital a lot last year, so who knows what I thought was, I always talk about it.
I do recall that, I remember Doug brought it up, that thought the town was interested in it.
If you feel like the best thing to dispose of, I don't have a problem with that.
Jeff, I will say one thing, you are not old. Not yet.
Thank you, Debbie.
I've got, I heard a whole bunch of Chris's fights, so I got to. I've got a, I heard a whole bunch of them, Christmas lights, so I got all of those, whatever we're gonna do with them, whether you want to auction them, or just dispose of them?
Is that the ones up at Dublin?
Yes, they're all, they're all old, they're all, they're all used.
Everyone on the phone, uh, Jeff, uh, Chief Gavert here is saying, and expressing with, uh, uh, he's really adamant about getting rid of the ones he's inherited.
Okay, well, if you guys all think we should get rid of them, I, I don't have any problem.
I'm gonna say this, I came, uh, three Mondays ago, I went down to the, uh, uh, the Miller Building, and we've got quite a few things in that building that we ought to be doing this same thing with, cleaning house, um. We're wasting a lot of space, and I think slowly we ought to do everything we can to just clean out. There, there's not a, I don't think there's any value to these, and I, I'm all for just disposing of them.
It's alright with me.
Yeah, if there's other stuff, can we auction any of the other things you saw?
There's some things that can be auctioned, and I'm not, yeah, I'm not suggesting just go take a roll off. There's some old, uh, there's some brand-new signs for businesses that don't exist now. Um, there's other things that we'll uncover, but then there's, like, several drums of oil that need to be, uh, got rid of, there's, we could empty this space out, and we could bring more equipment inside.
Well, again, if you're planning on such an auction, unless those are, those wreaths are in the way between now and whenever you'd have an auction this summer, throw them in, who knows, somebody might spend $25 for them, that's $25 you didn't have, but if you need the space right now, then trash it, but it was just another alternative, an option. So, what we find are, I'll put them in the dumpster, some I'll pull them out then.
Yeah, they will.
Well, what's everyone wanna do?
I, I would say, I, I know, I know what you're saying, Dan, and they probably are, John, but, you know, if we can make another $100 for the city, and we'll have an auction anyway, there's a chance, I mean, we can always throw them away right after.
Okay.
But, that's, that's, I mean, that's just, I know, you've seen them, I haven't, so.
Debbie, Nathan?
You know, I, I really don't care either way, you know, my first thought was try to get a little money out of them, but, you know, I don't know when we're gonna be able to have an auction, that's one of the big things.
Good point, Debbie.
You know, if we can get through another year storing them, you know, without too much hassle, but I know we have all this new stuff, and I know they're, they're a pain trying to store them, but, you know, I can't imagine even thinking about having an auction till sometime next summer.
Let's do this then.
I'm gonna make a motion to dispose of those, if you feel like, uh, neighbor else feels like, and Jeff said it, I would make a motion to dispose of them.
Meaning throw them away?
I would second that.
Alright, we have a first and a second. Thank you, Jeff and Debbie.
Steve? What do you think? Go ahead, Thermoide. Dan?
Aye.
Nathan?
Aye.
Great.
Alright, thank you. Um, my last issue is, uh, a job posting. Uh, I don't think we have, there's no decision to be made today, but, um, Steve brought up that I did have a typo in, uh, the very last sentence. I had added a few words there, and didn't take out the appropriate ones, but please, everyone, take a look at that job posting, tell me what you think, and, uh, if you have suggestions, make them, and I will send them back to me, I'll compile them, and, uh, submit it back to everyone just as soon as possible. At that, with that, we may then have another executive meeting to discuss, uh, moving forward, and what our options are again.
Yeah, I think those are some good thoughts, Dan, we need to, we need to move forward as quick as possible, so I would encourage, like you said, everybody to get back with you on those, uh, on that, because we need, we really need to move forward with this.
Yeah, thanks, Jeff. I am talking with the guys on Monday, and they're doing a great job, but, but they would like to, to have some direction, some clarification, what's going on, so. Uh, this, uh, situation we're in with, uh, COVID's gonna make it difficult, but, but I think we need to be moving forward. I hope that, uh, mid-May, mid-late May, things are really, uh, turning around, and we could be ready to do some, uh, some interviewing here.
Absolutely.
I hope so.
Okay, well, there's nothing needed other than, uh, on that issue, other than everyone, uh, taking a look at it. Bob?
The only thing I have was what I emailed everybody about an hour and a half ago on the updated personnel policy. As I indicated in my cover email to you all, I tried to incorporate those things that everybody seemed to kinda be in informal consensus about, added a couple things that had been suggested, and then still leaving up in the air, what was yellow highlighted, were the PTO and vacation and holiday things, that, right now, what's on there is exactly what's in your current code, because it did not appear that we had consensus on those things, so I would just ask that everybody kinda look at, concentrate on those areas, or let me know if any of the other areas are improper, but mainly in those areas that are still up in the air, what your final feelings are, so we could get one more final draft to everybody. Um, although I think somebody said we probably would not implement this new until January the 1st, so we've got some time, that's why I wasn't really pushing it, but I just wanted to show that I had incorporated some of the things that had been discussed.
Should we take this, uh, time and, uh, say, schedule another meeting, since we have the two issues to discuss? Uh, schedule something for next week, so we can keep the momentum up?
Yeah, sure.
Phone people?
Yeah, I would have no problem, the same, I mean, the same process as you, so I would have no problem with that.
Okay. Hearing no complaints, is there a bad day next week?
I don't have any. So what time I come out of my show?
Alright, um, I believe that we're going to cancel the wastewater meeting, but to be certain, could we, uh, not do it Monday?
Tuesday does work.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Is it Tuesday?
Okay, Tuesday.
Tuesday?
21st.
Debbie?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, I don't think it will be a long meeting compared to the last one, but, uh, we ought to be able to, I'd like to make some progress there.
6:00 PM.
6:00 PM, everyone?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Executive session?
Okay, what, what day is that? That is the.
On personnel, okay.
Tuesday the 21st. Executive session for personnel.
Okay.
Okay, um, Sherri?
Well, I have anything else?
Alright.
Dan?
Yes.
I, I did have one more thing, I just happened to think of it, if you got a second?
Okay.
Um, for our application process that we're gonna do, um, we were thinking maybe, um, if it's possible to add to our, the town website, where they can download the application electronically.
Yeah.
Um, instead of having them come to the office to pick them up, um, I don't know who, who it is that maintains that, um, website now, Sherri, I'm sure you know, but.
Um, Larry asked me about that today, and he was gonna get the approval from you, and then I was gonna go to Ryan and ask him if, if that was something that he would be able to put a link on to.
Does, does the council, uh, is they okay with that, or do you oppose that, or?
That's fine, it's a good idea.
We may also include a link on our Facebook page, too, that way they can, uh, download the application and document fair.
Oh, for Dan to sign.
Okay.
I think we're good with that, Richard.
Yeah.
Yeah, fine, ready?
Fine.
Okay, that's awesome, thank you.
So, Bob, if everybody, like, on the minutes and everything, they approved it, but then just those two sign it, and then when we get back together, do, does everybody sign it? Or?
You can't, well, there is no requirement that all council members have to sign off on the minutes, or that.
Okay, any of that, okay, alright.
And, and actually even the ordinances, or for example, that lease, I, I'm inferring that you've taken upon yourself to approve that when that farm lease is signed, I have it here ready for Dan, he can sign that alone, as well. And so even though that has been your custom, nothing requires all signatures on every little document. Now, it would only be if you get to the point where you have to have claims approved in between your meetings, that was one of the things we said, you might think about delegating, you've not gone that far yet, nobody has said for me to do that kind of ordinance yet, because you've been so far able to do it at this type of meeting. We also did not have to, they lifted the requirements that we had to do a technical resolution to approve this method of holding a meeting, that's why I've not done that resolution either yet.
Okay.
Okay, good.
Alright, uh, we were just talking about, uh, some of the special meeting, or ways we're doing the meetings, and what, if we needed, uh, ordinance or resolutions, but we're good, Bob says, so far, so good. So, hearing no other, uh, questions or comments, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Alright, and a second?
Second.
There you go.
We have a first and second.
Dan?
Aye.
Nathan?
Aye.
And Jeff?
Aye.
Great, see you next Tuesday.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Bye, everybody.
Careful.
Bye.